I have had the honor of representing this area for some time. I want to first of all begin by saying thank you to Sheriff Petway. Thank you to the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. Thank you to Ms. Money, where is she? Because we always give it up women to these men, but we want to recognize the women too. She's helped to facilitate this evening and Chief AG. But I'm standing here today. And I called this meeting and I called Sheriff Petway and I said, "We've got to stop the bleeding." We've got to listen and take the time to listen to the people who have been wronged, who have suffered at the hands of the Brookside Police Department, who feel that their cries have gone unheard. We're here today to begin a process of healing. We want to listen to you and we're going to give you some advice at the end. Without you knowing it, there are representatives or individuals here from various state departments. They're here taking notes. They want to hear what you have to say. I can't identify them for certain reasons. This case is under investigation by the State Attorney General's Office. I have received that information back from Steve. Yeah, that's worthy of a clap. You can clap. On Friday, on Friday, I, excuse me, Thursday, I called for the resignation of the mayor of the city of Brookside. I did so in a way that it was professionally done. I did so because I received so many requests from citizens, not just who live in the city of Brookside, but who live in various parts, who travel to and fro. I want to say to you, I am sorry for the harm that has come to you. But I also want to guarantee you that those responsible for the illegal misconduct and police misconduct, let me state this, will be held accountable and responsible. And we will not stop. We will not stop until all of the voices and the cries of the people who have been impacted by this have been heard. And as I close, I want you to look around this room. One thing that Sheriff Petway and I have said, since this, all of these issues really hit the ceiling and John Archibald is here, thank you, John Archibald. Thank you. But one thing that he and I have said is, if you look around this room, this issue is not about black. It's not about brown. It's not just about white. It's not about old or young. It's about injustice to all who sit here tonight at the hands of the Brookside Police Department and its officials. So at this time, I'm going to pass the mic back to Chief AG. But I want to thank you all for coming. And I'm here to listen. And I'm here to take notes, as well as others. But if you just trust me, I guarantee you that change will come. It's already evident. Police chief, gone. Lieutenant, that's right, a lieutenant, gone. Some others will be gone. And before it's over, Mayor Brian will be gone. Thank you.
I want to welcome you here this afternoon. Now, we are here to hear from you concerning law enforcement about the city of Brookside. Please follow the rules so we can hear from all who have concerns and questions. Thank you. And now you'll hear from our chief and moderator, Chief AG.
I was stopped coming from dinner with my wife on I-22, just going into Forestdale, about to turn on Roberta Road. I'm a resident of Forestdale. I asked, "Why was I stopped?" They said, "You have a paper tag on your car." I had a brand-new car, only had it two days. Two days, brand-new car. He asked for my papers. I gave him. He saw my badge. I am a chaplain. I was sworn in by the City Council of Lipscomb. I have uniforms, I have a badge. And I go to the schools, talk to kids, at-risk kids, and everything. I am the one that's standing in the gap to build up our community. And it took someone like Lieutenant Bolceville and Mike Jones to try to destroy my reputation after their officer called me a derogatory name. This is not 1922. This is 2022. And as black, white, Latino, we all have the same rights. And we will stand up to Brookside and we will fight with everything that we have to get that city shut down. And it's going to take our elected officials to stand up for us. If the people didn't have the resources, there are hundreds and thousands of people that did not have the resources that I had to get out of that situation. They labeled me as impersonating a police officer just because I had a badge and I told him that I was the chaplain of the city and I am authorized to carry a badge. Because where people will know that I am in official capacity when I go to these people's schools, when I go to the drug rehab centers, when I go to these places to build up our community. But you still have police departments that are racial profiling and that are policing for profit, and it has to stop now. We have the officials in place that will fight for us all. It's not a black thing, it's not a white thing, it's not a Latino thing, it's a people thing. And we, the people, will put our elected officials on notice if you don't do something. May God bless you and keep you, is my prayer.
Giving glory and honor to God, who is the head of my life and the head of my household. I praise and thank God for each and every representative. I thank God for Sheriff Petway. I've been a citizen of Brookside for 17 years. It'll be 18 June the 3rd of this year. I didn't know who to talk to, but I am a praying woman of God. I don't do drugs, I don't drink, I don't do anything to people, and I live by myself. But I always pray, and this day has come at the right time. I began to look at Google, something I don't do. And I seen the news, Brookside. And I said, "Lord, out of all these years, you gonna answer me?" But I had to wait and be patient. I want y'all to know, I got so many stories, so I'm gonna keep it short. The last one was, I'm a hard worker, so I work, and I'm elderly, okay? They had begun to just stop me to collect money because I was working. The last time Chief Jones, didn't know nothing about Black Lives Matter, came to Brookside, I think it's been two years now, or a year and a half. I woke up out of a deep sleep, went to the post office to get my mail. This man said that I threw a middle finger up. I don't even live like that. He came in the post office, it's on the camera, if y'all have them to pull the camera. I ignored the man because I know he couldn't have been talking to me. The man came up in my face, Chief Jones, Mike Jones. I've been out there through, what, three mayors or four? This one told me, "You hear me talking to you?" Well, he got so serious, he said MF. And when he said MF, I just threw my hands up. Ah, Jesus, this man crazy. This man wouldn't let me out the post office door. I said, "Sir, I'm not gonna be afraid of you, but I want you to know, I will call somebody." Didn't know who to call other than the Sheriff's Department because God has given me favor to call these people and they'll take me to work if I have to. That's how nice they are. Also, you had a sheriff before him, the tall one, that she spoke on. I came in from work one night. I take care of the elderly, disabled, and hospice. Took the back road by the golf course coming in. The other young police officer, if I see his face, I know who he is. This is how they try to pin you up. If you don't know their name, what they do, they'll ask you, "Do you recognize their face?" "Yeah, I know Sheriff Petway. Now I see his face." "You let me see your face, I know who you are." The young boy had the audacity to say, "Why am I taking the back road?" And he was with the chief that night, the tall, white chief, chief of police at that time. Followed me all the way to the house. I told him, "I appreciate y'all help." The time before then, okay, the time before then, I had a brand-new vehicle, I'm driving it now. So that made it 2020. I got stopped by the police department, guess where they were sitting at? In the country, in the woods. Their vehicle is black, can't see no name on it, stopped me and gave me a ticket. I'm going to the house, they say, "You didn't use your signal and we're gonna take the car because you don't have a license." The car, brand-new. Amen to God be his love. And I do want my money back every dime on record.
How you doing? Actually, I was coming through, I was coming off 22. Going, I recognized the sign that said Brookside to the right. I took a left, come over the vial out. Like, I thought that was Forestdale, the county, which is Roberta Road. He's sitting to the left. I got a headlight that's out, and he turns and comes and pulled me over. And he gave me, he gave me five or six tickets. And took my car. So my understanding is, it must be 19,000 population, 19,000 population in an area for them to work the interstate. So actually, they don't have no business on the interstate, or out of their jurisdiction. I understand that the interstate is 1.5 miles long through Brookside. And their population is only 1,200 folks. So you have to have 19,000 folks for them to even come on the interstate, or to work the interstate. So they should not be allowed on the interstate. And I think, all I want, all my tickets dismissed. And I want my vehicle back because they was in an illegal, they wrote me some illegal, illegal writing of these tickets. And they was out of their jurisdiction. I just, I just, I'd like to see some justice done too. I'm having problems getting to work, I work with the sheriff and the chief, having problems getting back and forth to work because they took my vehicle. They want thousands of dollars to get my car back. And they ain't been for 15 days. It was $340 when they hooked it up on the truck. I got a bill of sale right here. When I called them, they told me, since I hadn't had the car transferred to my name, that I had to have, I had to have a rifle owner. But since they've been in the spotlight, I called back. They told me I can use a bill of sale. Now, I got a bill of sale I've been had from the beginning. My car wouldn't have been no thousand dollars if you hadn't let me use my bill of sale from the beginning. So, like I say, I'd like to see something done about it. They got my car, it's a thousand something dollar, man, probably getting back at work. Whatever y'all can do to help me, I need it.
Mr. Killings, for the record, who took your vehicle? Who towed your vehicle?
Uh, it was, I got the phone number, the phone number is a, it's a 647, Allen Bill, Allen Bill.
Jet, okay, okay, okay. Jet towing.
647-0135, that's the number.
Thank you.
I'm Candace Beasley. I moved in Brookside October the 1st, 2018. Okay, I'm sorry, guys. I moved in Brookside October the 1st, 2018. I actually moved into my house October the 5th. From that day forward, I got followed by the police every day I got off work, off the freeway home, literally, every day. Till October the 20th, I'm literally like, I stay on Bivens Chapel Road. And anybody know, like, you staying in Brook Road and Bivens Chapel Road, it look like the same turn, like, when you were in turn. So I'm just moving there, so I don't know the roads, and it's dark when I'm coming home. I picked my signal to make the right. I was gonna make the right on St. and Brook Road. I'm like, "No, this ain't my turn, let me go to my next turn." It's, no, this is my road. I picked the turn on and made the right. I see the police officer coming, Officer Seville, I see him coming. And so when I made the right, he said that I was going 50 in a 35. Ain't no way possible I could have been going 50 in a 35 when I ain't nowhere else for the turn. I was getting ready to turn the wrong turn, my turn was the next block. So when I made that right turn, I go, I'm able to get to my house. It's about four speed bumps on Bivens Chapel Road if I get to my house. I'll maybe get to my house, get out my car, get my cousin and my son the food that I had when they got. And I turn around and get out, I turn around, I see some police lights coming, and I'm looking where they going, I'm being nose, like, where they going? They pulled, he pulled in my driveway and pulled behind the car and said, "Get back in the vehicle." I told him, "I'm not getting back in no vehicle." I said, "What you need with me?" And my pet way, you should know this story because you had your deputy, Deputy Bot, apologizing for the situation that went on. So I turned around, I say, you know, he kept, Seville, I said, "Could you tell me why you pulling me over?" "No, you don't," he telling me, "Get back in the car." "Why I'm getting back in the car for?" And you're like, I'm, I'm literally like, nothing, I want to know why you want me back in the car. So he turned around and asked for the insurance for the car. My cousin, I was driving her car. So he asked for the insurance for the car and this thing, so he told her, "Don't say anything." So my mind, everybody keep their insurance where? In their glove compartment, correct? I turned around, reached for the glove compartment. And when I reached for the glove compartment, he turned around, had his gun pointed at me. And I turned around, and I had it all recorded. Everything, I even have Chief Mike recorded, everything. I went to Jefferson County Attorney Fast, I called down to the State Attorney General, no help. I had no help nowhere. Only thing I had help was apology that you had your deputy do. Other than that, I didn't have any help. And I just had a problem like two weeks ago with a, when an officer pulled me out of my car, my car still was in drive.
Okay, sorry. My name is Darryl McTerry. I don't live in Brookside, but the reason why I'm here is because my friend Vincent Witt called me and told me what happened to him. And it kind of resonated with me because a similar experience happened to me. I'm a lifelong resident of Jefferson County. And I ended up, when I got home from the military, I chose to buy my house over here in the city of Fultonville. And I actually had gotten me a new car too. And so ended up getting pulled over on Highway 31. But part of the reason why I moved in Fultonville was because I heard Corridor X was going up, you know? And I have family in Tennessee, so I go that way all the time. So I didn't even know Brookside was a place until I heard about this. So that's interesting too. But so, so I want to know, I'm finding out from listening here, I was gonna ask what the hell is going on, but I'm listening. And I really get to see what's going on. So, you know, I'm worried about what's going on because what happens in Brookside affects me and affects all of us in Jefferson County, right? But when I got pulled over in Fultonville, the officer told me that he pulled me over because of my tag. And I was fine, I knew, I saw when he pulled me over, I was like, "Okay, it must be the tag, I got a new car." First time getting a new car too, so that kind of ruined the whole experience of having a new car. But when he finally got to talk to me, he says, "I pulled you over because of your tag and I don't know if you stole it." And I was like, "Yo, you know, don't go there with me." You know, I had to say it like two or three times, "Don't go there with me." But then, you know, and I reported it to the, to the chief over there, and his justification was that there was some thefts of dealership cars in Hoover. And I'm like, "Well, we don't have any dealerships over here, you know, and what's that have to do with me?" So my question to the people is, what is it about a new car with a tag, a paper tag, that kind of sends police officers into prison? I don't understand that. So can y'all answer that paper tag issue?
I'll just simply say it's called bad policing.
I wanted to take this opportunity to give y'all a little insight on what the people of Brookside have been dealing with as far as the town council and the mayor and the police department. You know, I live right up from the ballpark on Park Avenue. And they know me pretty well. They built a camp down there, I call it a camp, it's an RV park. But it's basically a camp now. Well, you know, you can't let your children go down there because it was so nasty and it was just awful. You'd find all kinds of stuff to create down there. So I went to town meeting. I told them, I said, "All the money you're making on charging these people $500 a month," which there was 21 people down there, 21 campers. So they was charging them $500 a month to stay there. But he couldn't allocate no money to fix the park. Well, I kept raising can, I said, "Well, that ain't right." You know, they got a canoe service down there. That'd be, that'd be coming from Everness, you know, Mountain Brook, they're wrapped around. But see, our biggest problem down there is it's a family-run organization. And it's been that way for the last 30 years. Everybody wants to talk about the mayor and the police. Well, they can't do nothing without the committee saying, "Okay." See, I go to these town meetings, nobody would show up. I would be the only one there. We got in an argument last time I was there. He had the two police officers come stand behind me, and I had my two daughters with me. See, I got nine grandkids that live at the end of that street. There's been two sex offenders and one guy exposing himself to children that's been caught down there. And I was raising sand about the, you know, how they do them about going in down there. He told me, "He's tired of me coming up there." So I got a petition up. I go down there with a petition from the people of the neighborhood that live around there. He said, "I don't want to see that." He said, "I'm tired of you coming up here complaining." I said, "That's what this is for." You know, and I have to admit, they've left me alone a lot. Because, you know, I'm not, you know, I've worked 32 years in the mines. I'm retired now. I don't care. You know, I got nine grandkids live there. That's my main priority. And that's what I worry about.
Which street does that sex offender live in on?
Uh, they supposedly got both of them out. And then they had, they were trying to catch a guy that was exposing himself to the children down there, and it was on Facebook. You know, all I'm saying, all the money, see, I had a friend of mine coming from South Carolina, going to Arkansas. And I told him, I said, "Well, just stay down there in my camper, down at the park." Well, quite naturally, the ATM machine's messed up and you gotta pay in cash. And I'm gonna leave it right there.
My complaint about the Brookside police policing the 22 Interstate Highway. On, I'm a commercial driver, hadn't had a ticket in over 20 years. And on 3120, I was taking my uncle to Birmingham, and he wrote me a ticket, pulled me over, wrote me a ticket for move-over law. And I tried to explain to him, "You can't move over when there's an 18-wheeler next to you." And he pulled out, he had another victim, he pulled out and he got right behind me, wrote me a ticket. And when I took the, when I went to pay for the ticket in Brookside, they charged me $270 for that ticket. My wife had called Birmingham and they said it was a $45 ticket. That's ridiculous. And then the mayor came out and talked to my 80-year-old uncle and was rude to him. When the officer pulled us over, my uncle's 80 years old, I was taking him to Birmingham for an eye surgery. And they come walking, he comes walking up to the car, goes, "Huh, you're from California. I think I smell marijuana." What a thing to say to my 80-year-old uncle. He was ready to take us out of the car and take us away. He saw my commercial license and he just wrote me this ticket. And he told me, "Your California license is no good here." I was moving here at that time. I've since traded it in. I have an Alabama commercial license. But this is ridiculous. I haven't had a ticket in 20 years. I know to pull over, and you can't do it if it's hazardous. So that's my complaint.
Hi, I'm Ashley. I actually don't live in Brookside. I live right outside Brookside at Forestdale Mobile Home Park. They constantly are out there with roadblocks. This is not Jefferson, I mean, it's not Brookside territory. It is Jefferson. If I call 911, I'm getting Jefferson County. I am not getting Brookside. They patrol that, I don't live there anymore. I moved out, I moved to Jasper. I am not moving there. I got pulled over five times with my tag. I had just purchased the vehicle from my mother, and I had 18 days to get it legal. I got pulled over five times within four days. Two times by the same police officer, Officer Seville. One time by Officer Sellers. Officer Sellers, every time I had all my paperwork, I had my, the piece of, I'm sorry, I'm shaking. I'm so frustrated. I had all of my paperwork. Everybody, every, all times that I got pulled over, Officer Sellers decided that at this point, he was going to give me tickets. I got tickets, I have pictures of him giving me tickets with all my papers in his hands. I go to court, they said, "Okay, you're good to go." "Why are you wasting my time? I'm here, I have all my paperwork, I had insurance, I had everything." My husband, back here, he got pulled over, his tag was expired, well, I'm sorry, his license was expired by two days. He got a ticket. "Okay, fine, we'll pay it." That's my bad. That's our bad, we didn't renew it. So I get there, the ticket's $25. The court fees are $2.25. $2.75 on a $25 ticket. I didn't have the money. I'm living in a mobile home park, okay, guys? I don't live there anymore. But I don't have the money, I'm struggling, okay? My husband said, "Can I get on a payment plan?" Officer Jones grabbed him by the arm, drug him to the clerk, and said, "You need to pay it or you're going to get 30 days in jail." On $275. I just, I can't, I just can't. I just wanted my story to be told, and I'm hurt, and I have moved, and I now pay another county. I'm in Walker County now. Y'all have a good day.
Hey, how y'all doing? I'm here to speak up for the younger crowd. I've been staying in Dora for about a year now. I'm only 28 years old. I stayed with my parents all the way up till I was 26. I've never got a ticket from Jefferson County or Birmingham. I pass by them every day going down 22, they sitting in the same spot. I even blow at them half of the time. I started going 78 way because I can't go 22, period. I switched my cars up, I purchased, what, four vehicles? And my dad probably can tell me better, but I purchased four vehicles in the last, what, probably year? Every time I switch vehicles, they pulled me over in every car, gave me an individual ticket for every car that I was in, gave me at least three to four tickets. I got them dated and everything, documented and everything. They gave me at least five to six tickets every stop, and I was jailed every time. One of the times I had COVID, told them I had COVID, the officer looked down the back windows and drove, it was freezing cold. I got even sicker, I had to go back to the hospital when I got out. Cost me over $1,900. Every time I went to jail, I spent over $1,500 to $1,600. Getting out, getting my car, everything. Then when I go back to my car, my car's tore up to shreds, I guess they thinking I got something. Half of these charges that they gave me on these papers, they stated I had drugs. I had no drugs. These drugs are just appearing, I guess. I guess they poof, out of thin air. But I had no drugs present in neither one of the cars. I had three weapons in each stop, probably each stop. My dad had to give me a weapon because they kept taking my guns. Got valid pistol license, everything. Now that I stay in Walker County, I got Walker County pistol license as well in my wallet. Because I'm aware that wherever you go, you have to have pistol license for that county. So I tried to do right by doing that. But they give me tickets every time they stop me. So 22 is quicker for me to get home because I'm an engineer for Hilton. It's quicker for me to get home that way. But now that, you know what I'm saying, it's crazy. You know, I just want to know what can I do, who can I talk to? My gun, my gun, both of my guns, they still got them, had them, well, they had them since before my birthday.
Did they charge you with a gun offense?
No, nope.
But they kept their guns?
They kept my guns. They got, they got my guns, my money, everything. So I just want to know what I need to do, you know? Child tax credit? You know, so they pulled me over every time within a certain period of me getting some money, so.
All right, I'm making a complaint on Brookside. It was September the 6th, Labor Day. I was coming home back, getting off the ramp. They had someone pulled over on 22, going back towards Forestdale. They said that I had, let me look at it. They said, "I got a ticket for not moving over when I know I moved over coming across the ramp." And then my pistol permitted. And then my pistol permit was, uh, expired. I got another ticket for that. And they also tried to hit me with a DUI controlled substance. I feel like, just, Brookside, I need justice, for real. I've been, I've been calling for my pistol that I had got, like bro said. It's been like two, three weeks now, I had already paid my money for that ticket. I was trying to get my firearm back. I've been calling them for like two, three weeks now. They'd say that someone in their office is sick or something and I can't get my firearm back. But the DUI, like I said, the DUI controlled substance, I feel like I, I pled guilty to the driving, um, to the traffic, to the driving too close or whatever. But I just feel like they just need justice for real. They searched me every, like, searched me everything, I ain't had nothing on me. Like, it was just crazy. It was, it was, it was, then that was my first time getting like offense on me. Like, I'm, I'm not a bad person, I have, I'm twenty-seven. I work at Carrefour, trying to get my CDL. Like, this DUI, I feel like this DUI could really stop me for real, for real, from what I'm trying to do. Like I said, Brookside, I really do need some justice, though.
My complaint is more in a narrative form because I knew that that was like a kangaroo court down there. And I was fortunate enough to where I had the money to hire an attorney. So I kind of made notes and what have you. And the narrative of this is, um, it was on a Thursday. I worked with the city of Birmingham. I get up at four o'clock. Around four twenty, Interstate twenty-two heading west is congested, okay? And the reason I mention that, you'll see in just a minute. Okay, on my way home from, from work, I was driving, and this is a nineteen ninety-two Dodge van, a conversion van, traveling west in the right-hand lane, running sixty-five, seventy miles an hour. I came over the rise of the interstate. Police car was parked in the breakdown lane with blue lights flashing. It was a wrecker, a car and the police behind it. A pickup truck towing a utility trailer was in the center lane in the interstate between, beside me. As I slowed down to get over, that truck and trailer slowed down too. So I couldn't get over. I did slow down. So as I passed the scene and crossed the bridge, um, there was a, well, before they paved it, there was a bad spot there. But anyway, um, I drove, um, up to the exit. I saw the police in my left-hand mirror pull out from the scene on the interstate. As I continued traveling, I saw he was pulling me over. I turned on my right turn signal and exited off the interstate onto the exit. This is when I heard him turn on the siren and where I stopped the van on the right-hand shoulder. That kind of just sets up for what's coming. So there again, this is around four twenty in the evening. As an officer walked up to the van, he shouted, put both hands on the steering wheel where I can see them, exclamation point. This was like, sir? Okay. Oh, okay, I have two, two minutes and twenty-five seconds, but okay. I put both hands on the steering wheel. He shouted, let me see your driver's license and proof of insurance. As I asked with the, I asked if I was being pulled over because I didn't get into another lane because of the pickup truck. This is where, um, I, my sentence ended. I, I was, uh, going to tell him about the truck and he shouted, I'm asking the questions. Let me see your license, proof of insurance. I told him I carry my wallet in my left front pocket. I pulled it out, uh, without being towed. You know, put my sunglasses off, turned the engine off, rolled the window down, all of that. And I was charged for, um, for, uh, fleeing or attempting to elude the police. Now, keep in mind, I worked with the city of Birmingham and I drive a city car and I knew this would, could, uh, you know, mess with my livelihood. All right. Also have CDL license and that too would play in factor. And I was charged with the move over for law enforcement vehicle law. And I, I couldn't move over, okay? So anyway, by the time I got out of there, I was charged with attorney fee and everything. It was nineteen hundred and seventy dollars. They, they charged me five hundred dollars for the, for not pulling over or getting over and then two, whatever it is, for court cost. And I was also charged, now, they dropped the fleeing and eluding charge, but charged me court cost. And if I hadn't had that attorney there, I'm sure I'd been a lot worse.
Okay, guys, sir.
Yes, sir.
We don't mean to be rude, but we've got nineteen more people who would like to be heard, so we got to kind of stick to the three minutes.
Yes, sir. Well, if there's any way I'd like to see the city of Brookside government dissolved and the prosecutor, Mr. Parnell, the judge Wooton, Mayor, Mayor Mike Bryant. Yeah, they all need to go.
My name is Stevie Thomas and Brookside pulled me over and they said I failed to stop at a stop sign, which I stopped. And when they pulled me over, he took so long to write the ticket, and then when he came to the car, told me, get out the truck. I say, for what? Get out the truck. And then they said, get behind the truck, give me your keys. I say, for what? We fit to tow your truck. I say, for what? Say you're, uh, driver like suspended. I said, my license being reinstated, I say, I got the paperwork showing where they reinstated. You know? And I said, okay, y'all fit to tow my truck. I said, where they tow it to? You go to Brookside precinct, you got to pay this money. And then I had to go to Adamsville where they had my truck at. And then jet towing, when they banged my truck out, they bent my driver door and I called him and I told him what was going on, what's going on now. He said, come on, take your truck to the shop and I write you a check.
Sir, can you tell me where jet towing is?
Uh, in Adamsville, right by the railroad tracks, by the courthouse, by the city hall. Yeah, he see what's going on now. He say, must tow, take your truck down, um, right there in Adamsville, um, seventy-eight. It get estimate, you get it fixed, I can write you a check. You know? And, um, I had to pay all that money right before Christmas. My grandkids got short, I was at almost twelve hundred bucks. And I want my money back and my ticket dismissed. Yes. So I can finish my grandkids' Christmas.
All right, I'm speaking for my stepson that couldn't be here tonight. He's sick, very asthmatic. And he was arrested on four six of twenty-one. They impounded his vehicle, my vehicle immediately, which I have a tracker on the vehicle. Whenever he didn't come home on Friday night, around five-thirty, I knew him to be home, I pulled up my tracker and found him, uh, stopped at the corner, uh, or at the intersection of Cherry Avenue and Cherry Brook Drive, which is two-lane road straight, straight through Brookside. I told him, never go through Brookside, but he's from Mississippi. And he got lost coming out of Gardendale. And instead on, on, uh, Philstown Road, taking a left and heading out to the interstate, he took a right and ended up in Brookside, lost. So he was pulled over. Whenever I got to the site, the, they had just, the tow truck driver had just got to the truck. And I asked, I pulled up behind the officer, I stopped about thirty feet from the vehicle and I got out of the vehicle. By this time, it was pitch dark. And I asked the officer, I said, can I have my truck? And he screamed, no, get in your car and leave. So I immediately turned around, got back in my truck. I said, I, my wife was with me and, and I said, did you see that? So we couldn't pick him up that night. Next morning, I went to pick him up. I've spent a total of fifteen hundred and fifty dollars just to get him out of jail in bonds. He was charged with marijuana, a small, a small roach that they said was in a, a prescription bottle, which he does carry prescription because he's asthmatic and has several other health problems. I got a picture of the road that, uh, that he was stopped on. So he was charged with marijuana. Trying to get through this as quick as I can.
Was your vehicle towed?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Who did, who did it tow?
The same towing company that everybody else. And I can take you to. It cost me a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Cost me a hundred and seventy-five dollars to get this piece of paper from Brookside to take it to Adamsville to charge me another hundred and twenty-five dollars. Folks, I'm glad I was able to pay for my son because they would not take check or anything. I am a business owner and I had to have cash. They would not take anything but cash. Okay? So he was charged with obstructing traffic. There's one charge, obstructing traffic on a two-lane road. He, he was charged with failing to stop and exiting a parking lot. He, that's what he was charged with, failing to stop, stop, okay? Well, I want to give you these last two and then, or three, and then that'll be it. Maybe two. Improper lane usage on a two-lane road. And then the DUI substance. I'd like to see all of this dropped and I'd like to see charges be brought against the, not only the officer, but I'd like to see against the judge too, because he's a part of, the judge is a part of.
October twenty-second, twenty twenty, he pulled me over. He had his hand on his gun as if he was going to shoot me. He forced me out of my car. They slammed me up against his police car. They told me the whole time that they had body cam, body, uh, camera footage going on. No footage. So when they pulled me out of the car, they had the dogs go through my car, they put the dogs on me. Officer Mike Jones, Chief Mike Jones, he tried to touch me in my face. So I was illegally detained. I sat in the back of the police car while they harassed me. They told me they was going to take my car, they was going to tow my car, they was going to take me to jail. They took my keys out of my car. So when I got pulled over, I FaceTimed my dad because they wanted my insurance. I had a picture of it, he went and sent it. So I FaceTimed my dad, it was daylight outside so he could see. They took my keys from me and they drove off. They left the scene with my keys. They left me on the side of the road, in a dark road, and they endangered my life. Um, I don't really have anything else to say. I feel like apology is old to me at the least.
This is a child, y'all. This is a child. This is a baby.
I'm twenty-three years old and I'm a senior at UAB. I also worked two jobs. I was doing DoorDash to make a little extra money at the time. And I was harassed and endangered, my life was endangered. I felt like when they took my keys, that they were coming back to do something other, something else.
In March twenty twenty-one, around eleven-thirty at night, I was a passenger in a vehicle with a friend of mine who was taking their nieces back to their family member house. On the way back from there, we were stopped by Brookside Police Department. I was a front seat passenger, there was no one else in the car other than the driver. When they stopped the vehicle, they came up and approached the driver, told them that they stopped them for no tag light. The vehicle had a firefighter tag on it. They gave them everything that they asked for. I was on the passenger side looking at my phone. I see a light come in through the passenger side and I look up and it's a guy motioning me to roll my window down. I'm trying to see him and I don't see a name tag, nor do I see a badge. So he go, I roll the window down and I say, how can I help you? He tells me, I need your driver's license. And I say, at first, um, I'm not driving, so I, and I'm, I'm not giving you my license because I don't have it. But at that point, I rolled the window back up and started looking back at my phone. His buddy on the other side is looking in, they're focusing on me. They say, hey, he wants you again. So I look up, I roll my window down, I say, how can I help you? He said, if you don't give me your driver's license, I'm going to arrest you under Pennsylvania versus Mims. At that time, I told him, hold on, let me tell you something. I said, that don't work with me, okay? I'm police, okay? And I told him that, um, so I don't, I'm wearing my seatbelt, that was really the only reason you can stop me. You don't smell no weed, you didn't see me moving around, I paid you all no attention. So there was no elements for you to even try to associate with me once I cut that off. At that particular time, they, it goes on and I asked them for a supervisor. And I did, I, I, I got intimidated, uh, addressed by the men in black because when I asked their names, they told me they was Agent J and Agent K. So I already know that if you're city police, you police, if you're a sheriff, or you might be a deputy, if you was trooper, you're going to have a trooper. So the agents are FBI, CIA, ATF, so, and you're not assigned to a task force. Well, as it continues on, um, they took me out, they arrested me. I was injured in the line of duty when I was with the SWAT unit and I went through several years of rehab that I still have issues to this day. When they stopped me, took me out and put me in a stress position in the back of the vehicle, they ended up, um, aggravating more injuries that I was already under the care of a doctor at that time on that day. So as it continued, they kept me there for over thirty, forty-five minutes in the back of the car while they was trying to figure out what we going to do because we just stepped in something. So as it continued on, they ended up, um, writing a ticket because it was supposed to be no tag light to the female driver. Like I say, the tag on the car was a firefighter tag, but it belonged to her father. When we left and got somewhere where it was in the light, I get the ticket, they wrote the ticket to her father to later on lie and say that, that was me. He looks like Bald Bull from Mike Tyson Punch-Out. He looks nothing like me. So they ended up giving me this, well, giving them this citation that we had to go get signed that this man didn't even know was on his record. But, um, I'm here because I have spoke with Mr. Archibald, we did an interview today. I have my attorneys, Mr. Terrell McCants and Mr. Bill Dawson. I am here to go ahead and press forward because the following day, I called the FBI and I started reporting what happened to me and I wanted a color law violation issued on them. I did it twice because the first person, it seemed like they didn't take it. Second person didn't, but then I did meet with an agent here because they got me there and we found out that they did not take my call. But the agent is working, I'm assuming, working my case and we came up with a code, the codes that probably fit. And from what I'm hearing here, it fits a lot of the stories of the people and do you mind, it's a short portion that I would like to read so they can hear that, if that's okay?
It's short?
It's short. It's short. Title eighteen, code forty-two forty-one, conspiracy against your rights. If two or more persons conspired or injure, oppress, threaten, or intimidate any person in any state, territory, Commonwealth possession, or district in the free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege secured to him by the Constitution or laws of the United States or because of his having so exercised the same. Or if two or more persons go in disguise, Agent J, Agent K, um, on the highway or on the premises of another with intent to prevent or hinder his free exercise or enjoyment of any right or privilege so secured, they shall be fined under this title or in prison not more than ten years or both. So I need help to push my case through at the attorney's office, as he said, because I haven't been getting contacted back. No one has contacted, only the agent is who I spoke to, but the two other people that I spoke to to take my original complaint, the agent couldn't even find my call because they basically brushed it off and dismissed it. So I'm asking for your help. I do have my attorneys who are going to represent me on my unlawful arrest because they did let me go after they had me there, but it was the point of what happened. Thank you very much. And there are good offices out there, don't think that we're not.
Question to ask, when you're driving through Brookside now, you can probably count all the speed limit signs on one hand. They have removed all the speed limit signs. I mean, what's going to I mean, what's gonna, you know, so they can, two miles up the road, it says 45 miles an hour. You're driving down the road and it says reduce speed ahead. It doesn't tell you what the speed is. They're gonna stop you and give you a ticket. So we need to get the speed limit signs back up where they belong.
So June 2020, I had took the ACT that morning. And after taking the ACT, I went home, went to sleep. When I woke up, it was around 11 o'clock and I text my cousin, asked her what she was. She sent me her location, which was like 30 minutes from where I stay and I stay in Vestaia. So I'm driving through Brookside, going to a racetrack. And I did notice the police down the street pulled somebody over, but I thought nothing about it because it was cars parked on the side of the road where they was going to the racetrack. So I made a U-turn. And when I made the U-turn, I was turning right to go up a hill, but I was at a standstill because there was cars in front of me. I sat there for a minute, like, I know for five minutes. Then they finally moved out my way. Once I got up the hill, I seen police lights. I'm like, who they looking for? What, who they, why they pulling me over? So I finally stopped and I rolled my window down just a little bit. And he was like, put both of your hands out the windows right now. He had his hand on the gun. So I instantly, I was still on the phone with my cousin. I instantly dropped my, put my hands out the window. So he came up to me, he was like, do you know why I'm pulling you over? I said, no, sir, 'cause I was already scared. I don't like the police. So I said, no, sir. He said, um, well, I pulled you over because you made an illegal U-turn and you just tried to run from me. I said, run from you? I didn't even see you. So he said, well, now I'm pulling you over because your car is re, with marijuana. So I'm like, oh, Lord. So I'm still on the phone. He said, get out the car. And if you don't, I was still on the phone. He was like, if you don't get out, if you don't hang up the phone, I'm gonna do something to you. I can't remember exactly what he said. So I just instantly threw both of my phones in the car. I have two phones. Luckily, I had on my Apple Watch. My cousin was walking down the hill to see what was going on and what happened. He told her, if you don't step away, I'm gonna arrest you too. So I'm like, oh, at least you just go, please call my mom. Please call my momma. 'Cause I panicked, I didn't know what to do. I'm crying. He gave me, well, he stepped me out the car. He looked in my car. He towed my car up. I went through Jets towing, they towed my car up. I had served them, no response. They gave me seven tickets. I had a ticket for carrying concealed weapons, uh, possession of marijuana, what this is, eluding, brass knuckles. What else? Possession of paraphernalia and reckless driving.
One minute, Brittany.
Okay. So once they gave me all my tickets, he put me in the back of the police car. I was panicking, so luckily I had on my Apple Watch. I was struggling to call my momma, my Apple Watch. I was like, ma, please come get me. I don't know where I'm at. I didn't see his badge. I didn't know his name. So I was panicking. He, we went to court finally last year, I think around April or June. Uh, they dropped all my charges, but two, I'm still paying fines on them. I'm saying this to say that I feel like he messed up my life 'cause I am trying to go to school for nursing. And I feel like I can't go now because I had this stuff on my record and I'm still paying fines that I can't take care of, but. And I'm only 26 years old, so this happened in 2020.
I want to thank everybody for coming, but before you leave, I need, thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to, if you all would, for those of you who have a pen or pencil or end a pencil, pull your cellphones out. I need you all to help me. I'm going, let me, as I, as you're doing that, let me say something. We're going to deal with Jets towing. Jets towing has some things they need to answer to. We're gonna see what we can do to get some of these guns back. 'Cause we want to know what happened to these guns. With regards to these road signs, there's only one person in this room unless there's something that I work with the county on. I don't recall doing an annexation between Birmingham, excuse me, between unincorporated Jefferson County and Brookside. One of the responsibilities of a state legislator is to handle annexations. That must be enacted in law and I must submit that to all of my colleagues and it must be voted upon. That has not happened. We will have those road signs removed. And the mayor will institute, since he says that he wasn't the mayor, but he was the pro, he, he was the pro team. He was on the council. He approved a 640% increase for the city of Brookside. No one can tell us where the money is. The last I checked, I didn't get a 640% increase on anything. So those are the issues. Illegal stops, illegal searches, harassment, harassing, hara- harassing communication. And, and we're here, I promised everybody they would, let's let me wrap up because this is what I've heard. And that's why I'm gonna give you this information. The state auditors are investigating. Our post has been in the city of Brookside for the past few days looking at their police practices. I had asked for a suspension of the court. The court was suspended for tonight. Don't know if because I asked for it, but it was done. Thank God for that. The car, the car, excuse me, for this week, the cars are going to be sent back. The unmarked armored cars are going to be sent back to the state. The city has engaged the service of former Judge Kenneth Simon to come in to do a full investigation. He has most recently been appointed or recommended to the Board of Trustees for the University of Alabama. He is one of the great lawyers here in the state of Alabama. He is a fair and just individual and he is going to assist in getting down to the bottom of this. But even with that being said, I am not going to rest. First of all, I'm unapologetic for not being afraid. But I am not going to rest because I came, I grew up between two points and, and two obscure places on the map. Adamsville and Gravesville. And I will not sit here, whether I'm reelected or not. I practice law every day of the year. So I'm good. So I want to say to you, we're sitting here because we care. We are sitting here because we serve as the voices for those whose voices cannot be heard. Had it not been for us and our voices, unfortunately, it's sad to say that many of you all would not have been heard before Thursday. So I want to simply say to you, keep on lifting your voices because whether they hear you, whether Steve Marshall hears you in Montgomery, Sheriff Petway and I hear you in Jefferson County. So with that being said, I will be also reaching out to the Department of Justice. I will be reaching out to the FBI because there have been many civil rights violations that have occurred. I will be also speaking with some of these lawyers that are here in the room. And there are some fine men and women lawyers that are here who are very concerned, not just because, and I know, and don't laugh at this, y'all think the only thing we want to do is make money. But this is a serious issue. And there are some lawyers that are taking pro bono cases in this matter. So as I wrap up, I want to say thank you to Sheriff Petway. Thank you, thank you. Let's give it up for Sheriff Petway. As I often say, these are thankless jobs that we have. But you'll continue to see us fight. I want to simply thank all of the neighborhood leaders in the area. But I want to give you this information. For those of you who have a pen, I'm going to spell it out. The first name I'm gonna, the name I'm gonna give you is Brian. That's B-R-Y-A-N Hilton. He is the Public Protection Specialist Office of the Attorney General. Again, that's Public Protection Specialist Office of the Attorney General. The mailing address is P.O. Box 300152. P.O. Box 300152. Montgomery, Alabama. 36130. And his email address is Brian, that's B-R-Y-A-N dot Hilton at AlabamaAG.gov. I need for you to make copies, if you don't have them tonight, to leave with me. I need you to email him the same things that you all said here during this meeting. Also, my email address, and these, these emails will be forwarded and received by my clerk, Mary Ruth Davis. And I will give you my mailing address. It's J-G-I-V-A-N, that's G-I-V-A-S and Victor A-N at ALhouse.gov. My mailing address, and let me spell my name for you. I am Representative Wandalyn Gavan. And my name is spelled J-U-A-N-D-A-L-Y-N-N. Last name, G-I-V-A-S and Victor A-N. My mailing address is 11 South Union Street. That's U-N-I-O-N Street. Room 528-E. Montgomery, Alabama. And you're gonna make these, your, send this to the attention of Mary Ruth Davis. Mary Ruth Davis. She is my clerk in Montgomery. Again, I want to thank you all. Our eyes are watching the city of Brookside. The nation is now watching the city of Brookside. I want to thank the media for being here, for bringing attention to this. John Archibald, who was on Sabbatical. Thank you, John. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And Sheriff Petway will close us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gavan. Thank you all for coming out this afternoon and staying the entire time. I thank you all for participating. And I want you to know, I believe everything that was said tonight. I believe every story. And one I would like to continue to share is the one from Pastor Witt. Pastor Witt's mother is my neighbor. She called me up, I believe it was 2019. They got stopped by, um, Brookside Police. And, uh, they were released and let go. But on that Sunday, I was out of town. I was in a conference in Kentucky. His mother is my neighbor. She called me up. She said, hey, my son and my daughter, they're on Crime Stoppers and they're wanted. Now, his sister, I'm just gonna tell her, his sister works at Social Security. She has a executive job at Social, Social Security. The bad thing about this situation, she wasn't even in the car. It had a warrant out for her arrest. Now, when they called me and I listened, I believe the story that was told, I immediately had his sister's warrant pulled and both of them taken off of Crime Stoppers. He was going to a church that day to, uh, preach and he was expecting to become the pastor of that church. But they messed this situation up by putting him out there on Crime Stoppers. So the stories that you tell, I understand and I believe. And I want to apologize to everyone in here from a law enforcement point of, point of view and from a person who is a law enforcement officer. I just want to say, we're sorry for each and every one of you that had to go through a situation like this. You shouldn't have had to do it. But this training center right here is here to train all law enforcement officers how to perform their duties and how to do it correctly. But now I see, we might need to train the public on how to know your rights. And what to do if something happens to you if your rights are being violated. If you have a firearm and you want to come out here and learn how to shoot your firearm and be trained and taught how to use your firearm, you can come here and we will teach you free of charge. All you have to do is download our app and sign up for the classes. Now, the, the story is, what do we do from here? What is next? The first thing we're gonna do is get those signs removed. I will go and talk to the, um, the mayor and the judge about these pending cases that are still pending. We're gonna make sure that, especially those that Mike Jo, Mike Jones is no longer there, so he's not gonna show up in court. Uh, neither, neither's the second in charge that was, um, resigning today. He's not gonna show up in court. But we're gonna find out what to do, what's next, where to go from here. And I know this is what you want to know, what to do next. So we will find out and we will be giving out information. And I did give out a lot of information, uh, uh, to people that called my office telling me stories. I said, hey, appeal your case to Jefferson County so that way you can be heard. So if you've gone to court within the last two weeks and your case was heard and you lost, appeal, you still have time to appeal your case to Jefferson County District Court so you could get a fair hearing. 'Cause most of you probably weren't even stopped or arrested in the city of Brookside. So that, they did not have authority outside of Brookside to do what they were doing.